All right, I'd like to call to order the April 15, 2025, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you kindly call the roll.
Daniel Koshakjin.
Present.
Gene Marseille Jr.
Present.
Patrick Mayfield.
Present.
Will Corrente.
In attendance.
Steven Myers.
Here.
Peter Pivko. Deborah Rain.
Here.
Sam Fish.
Present.
All right, next, order on business is approval of the March 18, 2025 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion, have we a second?
A second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Good evening, board members. Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator. Give you a quick update, the cases that have been approved by City Commission's last planning board meeting. First case is Apogee, 4906 North Flagler Drive. This was for approval of 39 unit, 21-story high building, approximately 235 feet. Commission approved this. Got a 5-0 vote at the March 31st meeting. This was a text amendment for particularly northwest neighborhood to allow shotgun homes to be self-divided, for the most part, for sale for affordable housing. A lot of the shotgun houses you see here technically on one lot today. So this text amendment you heard allows for the rehabilitation of these six shotgun houses and more shotgun houses that are located in this neighborhood allows the subdivision of the six homes and provide the HPP Board with the authority to grant special exceptions to the dimensional standards as you can see when they self-divided. Not going to meet current code, but this is what this text amendment for. You heard it at your February 19th meeting and commission approved this at the April 14th commission meeting, a 4-0 vote. Last case is Palm Beach Atlantic University. If you guys remember, this came before you back in February and they were building a 25-story dormitory with 11-level parking garage. Some of the conditions that you guys put on, one was landscaping or something on top of the garage. Actually, the applicant has, we have not seen it yet, but are going to propose to put some type of mural mural on top of it. Maybe worked by the students, maybe something like that, instead of the landscaping per se. And like we've done at several projects in downtown, we did it at the Craver Center has it. Palm Beach County Convention Center has it. And also the Judicial Courthouse, not sure which one. It actually has it also on top of their parking garage. They also did change the screening, it's kind of hard to see on the garage facade as you guys made a condition that and they did do that. But at the commission meeting last night, commission did approve it by 4-0 vote. But the commission asked that put a condition in as a major amendment. They would come back and they wanted them to redo the facade of the garage. So they're going to require to come back through the process once they figure out and work out something to let the commission see. Maybe planning board commission, not quite sure the process, changed the facade of the garage. But they did approve 11-story parking garage last night. I see Mr. Pivko just being, but he has a question. Because I think Rick is going to go, so I'm going to stop right now, I need to come back and do something on agenda. Now come back and ask your question.
Rick Green, Development Services Director. I also wanted to point out that we're continuing to work with the firm of Ziskovich Architects on an update of our downtown master plan. We're going through a public outreach sessions, a series of sessions right now and reaching out to the residents and businesses within the city. So I just wanted to point out for your edification, and certainly you're welcome to attend these. But we have two upcoming meetings, the next visioning discussion we're proposing for April 30th. It's to discuss transportation and mobility. It'll be across the hall in the Flagler Gallery. We're going to have some experts talk about transportation and some of the issues we're facing downtown. And then we'll have a Q and A session at the end. And in the following month in May, on May 22nd, we're going to have a second session on public realm and place making. Again, Ziskovich will be leading those discussions. We'll have experts on the panel, just talking in general. So I just wanted to mention that to you and the public and encourage you all to attend if you like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Okay, any questions of staff?
Staff would like to make note of the applicant for case, planning board case number, I think it's 1961A, maybe 2,000 in US, but the first case.
Right.
Applicants requesting a 30-day continuance to the next, to the May planning board meeting.
Do we have a motion to postpone that to May 20? We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of allowing the applicant to move to May 20, 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. All right, next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson. And I would like to take this opportunity to introduce our first alternate, Daniel Koshakjin. TK is a Director of Government Relations and Policy of the Hindu American Foundation, as well as the CEO and founder of his own political consulting firm, Breakthrough Strategies LLC. He received his BA in Political Science from Florida Atlantic University and a Master of Political Management from George Washington University. He is active in the old Northwood neighborhood, a member of the Chamber of Combers and a board member of the Gold Coast Tiger Bay Club of Palm Beach County. He has undertaken fundraising responsibilities for 201 Hubline and Palm Beach Symphony Development Committee. He has held leadership fellowships with James Madison Institute and the Anti-Defamation League. As an alternate, TK will participate fully in all of our proceedings and discussions. Where there is an absent board member, he'll be voting as well. So welcome aboard TK.
Thank you, appreciate the warm welcome.
All right, next on the agenda are declarations of ex parte communications. And let me begin by saying that with respect to code revision case 2506, I had a Zoom meeting with Kentuma of Urban Design Studio, who represents the 5400 project. I will however base my decision on the case solely upon the evidence presented this evening. As to all other matters before us, I have had no ex parte communications. I have received no written communications. I have conducted no investigations, I have made no site visits, and I receive no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? And TK, let me start with you and work our way down. Okay, can you please affirm that you'll make your decision?
Sure, I've also had a Zoom meeting with the applicant Kentuma. Other than that, I have not had any other ex parte communications, received any written communications, conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. So I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
And you will base your decision solely on the evidence presented?
I'll base my decision solely on the information.
Thank you so much, Gene.
As to all matters on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications, other than a request for a meeting, which was, I was not able to fulfill. I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much, Patrick.
I did also take place, take part in a Zoom meeting with Kentuma of Urban Design regarding case number 2506. With respect to all other agenda items, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. And I'll note that my decision this evening will be based on the testimony presented this evening. Thank you so much.
As to the matter of case number 2506, I did have a Zoom meeting today with the designer on the case. I have not received written communications, I did not conduct an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. I will make my decision this evening based on the evidence provided. As to the other matters, I have had no communication.
With respect to planning board case number 2506, 950YYYY. And case 2502, I had Zoom information sessions with the applicants. My decisions will be based on the information presented today. With regards to the other items in the agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted investigations, nor have I made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much, Deborah.
Okay, for code revision case 2506, I did have a conversation with Kentuma. However, any decision I make will be based on the evidence presented this evening. And as it relates to the items on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communication, I have not received written communications, and I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinion. And I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much, Sam.
In reference to code case 2506, I did also attend a Zoom meeting with Mr. Kentuma. But my decisions today will be based solely on the evidence presented tonight. As to all other matters, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received any written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made any site visits, and have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Well, thank you so much. That then brings us into the swearing of the speakers. Would everyone who plans to offer testimony this evening or speak, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to given this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you, may be seated. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. Planning board case 1961A has been continued. That then brings us to planning board case 950YYYY. And we need a better numbering system, please. 950 with six Ys. And we're going to hear from the applicant? Is that you, sir?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Roger Ramdean with the Office of Shuts and Bowen. I have here before you tonight a request for a major PD amendment. The major PD amendment is to change and add the regulations for the Rosemary Square, now will be called City Place. So by request, as stated, the request is to create a new sub area for the Hibiscus Garage. Second part of it will be to create the associated development regulations for this new sub area. And a third part of this request would be to now rename Rosemary Square back to City Place. By means of background, the Hibiscus Garage has served for parking throughout the entire City Place area. So this request is to add that particular portion of the prop, of the plan development into, into the City Place Plan Development. Here you can see a color rendition of what the sub area map looks like for the Rosemary Square and now City Place sub areas. So we are adding the Hibiscus Garage into the plan development. And we're also establishing the regulations associated with it. In your package, you should have received the complete regulations, but this is just an excerpt from that. In summary, what we're doing is we're going to increase the parking garage from six levels to seven with rooftop parking, so it's going to look like eight. We're going to add an elevator along Hibiscus Street to serve that garage. We're adding active use liners along the elevator portion of the site. And also to establish regulations in the sub area for the existing garage. This is basically what it's going to look like. Now, just as a reminder, this is just for the regulations to be added to the resolution and not for a site plan. The site plan will come to you at a future date. As part of a major PD amendment, we are required to demonstrate compliance with Section 9432A of the Code. We believe that we comply with all the standards, staff does concur. And with that, we do respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the City Commission. Staff does, as stated before, also recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, let's start on this end. Sam, any questions?
So this is for the existing garage that's currently there?
Correct.
Is there, are they adding a floor to the top of it, or that's just?
They're, there will be adding a floor to the top, yes, and also an elevator along Hibiscus Street.
Okay, so they actually, okay, that was it.
Deborah?
Peter? Have you considered electronic signage? So you don't have to change the signs every couple of years back and forth to the owner?
That would be a good idea, but.
Will, any questions of the applicant?
We're just really a clarification, so you're adding, you're really adding two levels, right? You're adding a level and then a rooftop level.
The rooftop doesn't count as a level, but yes.
Technically, it's a two level.
Technically, correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Patrick? Gene? No questions? TK, any questions?
Yeah, I may have had the same point on the two levels, but why wasn't it included originally?
Just on as-needed basis at this point with the expansion and need for additional parking within the City Place area, we opted to add that level to the.
Sure, just curious why it wasn't originally part of the development?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we hear from staff. Mr. Snyder?
Good evening, for the record, Eric Snyder, Principal Planner. Not going to go over a presentation again, but I do want to clear up a couple of things. There are actually two parking levels, parking decks getting put on in the garage. The roof is just moving up and then once that gets done, it's going to be an administrative review. We're going to look at, and I know Angela mentioned an earlier one, the painting on the roof or covering it. That's one of the requirements when they do the full build out of the garage. And doing some screening, some of those things are covered in the backup material. One of the other things I want to point out to answer your question about why they didn't have and why this is really needed. When the office towers that are going where MovieCo used to be on the north side of this, and Roger showed that, I believe, here, I'm going to pop it up here. Oops. Those two towers that you see in the foreground there, the originally, the shorter garage you see kind of with the black, with the sand color on top of it. This would be for y'all a little while ago to add a level or two levels to that structure as well. What they had originally planned on was to have parking lifts, which were like two-story car parking area that they can't, that would fit in lesser height. Well, they realized that that wouldn't work because the valet operations during office hours, rush hour, et cetera, in the mornings and in the afternoons, getting all the cars out there. So they realized that they needed just to do the full garages. So they added, just because of the dimensions, the height dimensions, they were only, and not to get these garages too tall, they added the level on the existing, the one you see in the foreground, next to the towers, and then the rest of those parking spaces that would have been there needed to be made up somewhere else to supply those two towers. That's why these two garage levels are going on now at this location. It's just a function of more cars need to park, so they need to have more cars. Just to let you know, the elevator serves the top floors, which are during the day going to be, what we've been told is for the employees, and those would get you down, with the employees down close to the garage. Similar to what is happening on the north side of that for the office, the existing office tower on Okeechobee has office tower parking in it. They don't self-park all their spaces in that building, they have some there. So, but what happens in the evenings, on weekends, those open up and then become parking available for the retail users of the rest of the development. So this isn't just a dedicated parking for the office building. It is going to be daily parking for the office and then open for the rest of the City Place development, which now back to being City Place again. So that was fun changing all those back. So anyway, do you have any questions of staff?
Any questions of staff?
Yeah, we've reviewed it, recommend approval, meets all the standards. So we're good with what they've proposed.
Any questions of staff?
Pretty straightforward.
Go ahead, please.
Just one question, the height of the new garage, is it, it appears to be higher than the rest of the City Place development. Was there a specific height restriction, like a?
Yes, so to the deck, the top deck would be 80 feet, or actually 78 feet. The garage you see in the foreground with the sand, the lighter sand color on it, that's actually the podium of those, same podium height as those towers, which is at 80 feet, same amount of stories of garage. So those two garages have been, are even, throughout the downtown, within the base zoning district that we, or the sub area districts that we've used for this, it is an 80-foot podium, less stories. But garages, because the levels are less than what typical office and residential floors are, they have up to seven, in this case, seven stories, and then the garage level. You could call it a story eight, but there's no roof on it, so it's seven stories with a top level of parking.
So this would represent the maximum in the future, they couldn't come back and put seven?
Well, they can always come back and ask. I mean, you know, right now, we've been trying to look at this and as these buildings have filled in, I don't think, you've been on long enough to have seen the, what was the old Macy's site go up? So we're looking at those buildings and the surrounding fabric of the downtown and what's allowed as they fill in. And, you know, trying to make sure that those are, respect the neighboring buildings. On this one, they are up against the railroad tracks, so it can handle that extra garage height. I mean, it's not ideal to have an A-story garage in any event that's not lined. But the location of it on the periphery of the development and then being buffered by quadrille and the railroad tracks does set it back from the neighboring, any neighboring properties, those residential towers that are to the east of this.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it, Eric. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we'll bring them back to the board. Does anyone have any concern for this? Any doubts? If not, I'll look for a motion for approval. I'll make a motion.
I move that the planning board recommend to the City Commission approval of planning board case 950YYYY. A request by Roger Ramdean of Shuts and Bowen on behalf of City Place Retail LLC for the approval of a major plan development amendment to the City Place Commercial Plan Development to amend the Rosemary Square Core Development Regulations to expand the boundary of the Rosemary Square Core to include the B Block Hibiscus Garage to create the Hibiscus Garage Sub Area covering the expanded area and to reestablish City Place to replace the Rosemary Square nomenclature. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the applications submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the applicable criteria in Section 94-32 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
We have a motion, have we a second? Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, that then brings us to our code revision cases, of which we have three. The first is case number 2506. This is a city-initiated request, so maybe hear from staff.
Rick Green, Development Services Director. What I'd like to do is provide some historical context and then I'll turn this over to Kevy DeFrank, our senior planner, who will go into more detail on the specific land development regulations. Let me begin by indicating that this is a staff-initiated request. In your disclosure, some people reference Kentuma, but it is not initiated by the private sector. This is a city-driven initiative. So the North Flagler Study Area is bounded by the northern city limits to the north, North Flagler Drive to the west, the Intercoastal Waterway to the east, and 44th Street to the south. The overlay begins just north of the Reibovitch Marina and the development, of which you've seen several developments there. The intent of the overlay is to better regulate future development within this corridor in the future. So to provide some context, this process really began on May 30th of last year when the District Commissioner for that area, Commissioner Ward, convened a meeting with myself, the city's engineering director, and representatives from the Northwood Harbor Neighborhood Association to discuss development and building heights within this corridor. At that meeting, we suggested to the commissioner that we would do a more in-depth review. We did that and then brought some discussion topics to a mayor commission workshop on October 21st of that year, of last year. And at that particular workshop, we were seeking specific direction from both the mayor and the city commission as to how we want to treat this quarter. We had a community outreach meeting across the hall on February 24th of this year. Last month, on March 17th, we celebrated St. Patrick's Day at the Sailor Club with a lot of the residents and went through a similar presentation. We're before you tonight to get your recommendation on the overlay and then we will eventually go to the City Commission for two public hearings. So as of tonight, there will be at least three more opportunities to comment on the district. So the, this is the North Flagler Corridor, so we, you have a match line on the right-hand side of the graphic. You see the very north end, beginning with the FPL and the Manatee Center to the north. It extends down and then matches up with the site on the left. We identified each of the parcels within this corridor. It's tough to see, but we've labeled these as part of the analysis we did subsequent to the initial meeting with the residents. We then sat down and identified every single parcel, the acreage, the use, the property control number. And basically, this is a blow-up, but these are some of the things we looked at just to get a better handle on what's within this corridor. We identified the zoning and noted that most of the zoning within this corridor is owned MF32, as you see with the brownish color. We have a couple parcels of plan development that were previously approved, namely Jeff Green owns some property in the north end here that has not been developed yet, but is still vested. There's a development of significant impact called 80 Points West here. We also have one PUR, Professional Office Residential Plan Development at the Sailing Club where we convened our last neighborhood meeting. And then we've got several recreation open space parcels within the corridor. So we identified all the uses that we thought could be potentially redeveloped. When you look at all the properties in red, these are properties that currently have an entitlement and approval or are built, and we don't suspect that there's going to be a redevelopment on that parcel for a long period of time. Again, as you're familiar, we recently approved the Apogee, so we're taking that off the list that was recently approved by the City Commission. So when you look at all the parcels that have the potential to redevelop, there's a total of 441 residential units. So it's not really a large number despite the MF32 zoning that's associated with this, the majority of the corridor. We have two other developments subsequent to the workshop that we had with the commission in October of last year. Subsequent to that workshop, two developments came into the city in the form of a new application, one of which represented by Mr. Tuma. Those buildings approach nearly 400 feet in height. They are still going through our review. our review process right now. So we looked at several things, we looked at the lot sizes of the parcels, and of the remaining lots that we feel could redevelop, there really are only three lots that are wider than a hundred feet in width. We looked at size of parcels, and we only have five parcels that are greater than one acre in size. We also looked at building heights, and again, the range was all over the place, from Jeff Green's Flagler Beach Club at a hundred fifty feet, his DSI is at twenty stories, we have an existing Palm Beach House condominium at thirty stories, twenty-six. You see, the two most recent developments that you saw was Alba and Apogee, and around, those hovered around two hundred thirty-five and two hundred and forty feet in height. So your typical parcel within the corridor, as we see today, is about a one hundred by four hundred foot deep lot. Not, again, many lots have widths greater than a hundred feet, and our concern as we were viewing development within the corridor, was how the building was going to be massed on such a small and tight, narrow parcel. We also were concerned about the treatment of any future building along North Flagler. How would that engage the street? Would we be looking at parking garages? How can we soften that look and appearance for residents who are walking along Flagler Drive? And then thirdly, how do the properties connect with the proposed buildings on either side of the lot? Certainly, we have less concern if you have a resident, or, I'm sorry, a park parcel on either side, but if you've got other existing developments, if you have single-family developments, certainly that would be more of a concern as to how that treatment took place. So, at that meeting on October 21st, we asked the city commission and mayor several questions, and the first one was, should there be a maximum height limit? So we discussed utilizing two hundred forty feet, given our desire to try to encourage more workforce housing, we also suggested to the commission, let us go a little higher if an applicant is willing to do workforce housing as part of that, and Kevvy will discuss this as part of his presentation. If you, this was very similar to, those of you who have been on the board for a while, what we did with the Curry Mixed Use District, where we established base heights, and through a series of incentives, we allowed you to go higher, as long as you were giving something back to the neighborhood. The second question we asked is, should there be incentives to achieve this greater height? We originally started with four incentives, a workforce housing incentive, which would allow you to go upwards of two hundred additional feet in height, park improvements, infrastructure enhancements, and fire station, substation improvements for the fire station that's at the north end. And then, as we looked at the parks, we recognized that most of these are covered by the citywide park bond, so we deleted that incentive, and in the fire station improvements, we recognized that we could simply merge that in with the infrastructure enhancement. So what you have before you tonight, and what Kevvy will discuss, are two incentives that could be utilized to achieve greater height, you know, unlike the eleven or so we had at Curry Park. We also discussed, should there be a maximum floor area ratio to regulate the massing of the building on these properties? And again, Kevvy will discuss this in more detail, and we said, any of those lots that are a hundred feet or less, will be allowed a floor area ratio, and that's simply building divided by land of two point five, and then anything in excess of a hundred feet will be allowed a floor area ratio of three. And then you see examples, these are, this is massing that could potentially be the same type of FAR, so you could build a box-like structure, or you could have a smaller podium for a garage and elevate the residential portion. But this just shows an example that there's a lot of ways to skin a cat to get to the desirable FAR. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevvy, he'll go into more detail, and I'll be happy to help answer any questions he may, we may have. Thank you.
Good evening, planning board members. For the record, Kevvy DeFrank, Senior Planner with the City's Development Services Department. Now, before I dive into the proposed development regulations, I would like to submit into the record two sheets of paper, which are updates to the staff report, more specifically, updates to the proposed development regulations identified on sheet twenty-five, or page twenty-five of the staff report. Thank you. So the intent of the proposed development regulations for the North Flagler Overlay District is to create a place of common vision and physical predictability for new construction along the waterfront, to reinforce the existing architectural character within the area, and to provide for development projects that are complementary to the surrounding residential neighborhood. And this can be achieved by establishing regulatory parameters, including parking, floor area ratio, setbacks, height, and architectural design. Now, with these proposed development regulations, no properties will be rezoned, no existing approvals, entitlements will be revoked. However, the proposed development regulations prohibit front and side setback variances, height variances, floor area ratio variances, and new plan developments. Now, the proposed development regulations identify street scape requirements that makes it the developer's responsibility to provide a twelve-foot wide multipurpose pathway, a seven-foot wide landscape area, and street lighting within the North Flagler Drive Public Rightaway adjacent to and in association with the respective development project. And the proposed development regulation also identifies minimum and maximum parking requirements for multifamily residential uses within the North Flagler Overlay District. And with the maximum parking requirement of two point seven five spaces per unit, this will help prevent project proposals or developments from providing excessive amounts of vehicle or parking spaces. And the proposed regulations also require that surface parking lots and the first two levels of parking garage must be screened by a liner building containing active uses, a minimum of twenty feet deep along the front, and a minimum of fifteen feet deep along the sides adjacent to existing public park uses. The proposed development regulations also require a pedestrian connection be provided between the front principal pedestrian entrances of all buildings and the public multipurpose pathway along North Flagler. And as Rick was alluding to earlier in the presentation, the proposed regulations identify a maximum floor area limitation of two point five for properties with a lot width less than or equal to one hundred feet, and for properties with a lot width greater than a hundred feet, the maximum floor area ratio limitation is three point oh. So the proposed development regulations also identifies conditional minimum setback requirements for portions of the buildings above forty feet, as you can see on the table. So for example, let's say a project proposal identifies a two hundred foot tall building on property zone MF32. So the portion of the building from zero to forty feet in height must be set back a minimum of twenty-five feet from the front property line. And for the portion above forty feet in height, that portion must be set back from the front property line a minimum of thirty feet. And for the portions above one hundred and twenty feet in height, they must be set back a distance of fifty feet from the front property line. And here's, here's a visual representation. As you can see, with the area identified as C, this is the landscape buffer, which is required along the front and the sides of properties. And the area identified as A is the minimum building setback requirement for the underlying zoning district, for the portions of the building from zero to forty feet in height. And the area identified as B is the representation for the conditional minimum setback requirements for the portions of buildings above forty feet in height. So the proposed development regulations also identify exterior lighting illumination limitation of zero point five foot candles, and this will help better control and regulate light spillover from the development projects within the subject area. And the proposed regulations identify a permitted base height of forty feet with a maximum height of two hundred and forty feet, but if certain criteria are met, then a maximum height of three hundred feet will be allowed, and I will cover this here shortly. So to achieve heights above the permitted base height of forty feet, developers can select one or both of the height bonus incentive options as identified on the table. And with the workforce housing height bonus incentive option, a maximum additional height increase of two hundred and sixty feet is allowed. And with the infrastructure improvements height bonus incentive option, a maximum additional height increase of two hundred feet is allowed. Now, with the workforce housing incentive, as you can see in the table, certain percentages of workforce housing units must be provided to achieve the additional heights. And as you can see with the last listed percentage, if twenty-five percent of total units provided our workforce housing, a maximum additional height of two hundred and sixty feet is allowed, but this only applies to properties with an aggregate of upland and submerged acreage of two point five acres or more. Otherwise, the maximum additional height increase is two hundred feet, resulting in a maximum building height of two hundred and forty feet. And for developers who are seeking to utilize the infrastructure improvements incentive, will receive one foot of height per thirty-four thousand and three hundred dollars in credit for the actual construction of improvements, or payments made to the city for improvements to the infrastructure within the area bounded by the city limits to the north, Broadway to the west, the Intracoastal Waterway to the east, and Thirty-Sixth Street to the south. And these infrastructure improvement projects can include roadway improvement projects, public utilities improvement projects, public stormwater management system improvement projects, and improvements to the fire rescue station number three. So the area in red is the defined area where the infrastructure improvements, funds, and And the proposed development regulations identify minimum architectural design standards, which provide flexibility to developers, but ultimately, this would help create building designs that are more in alignment with the surrounding residential neighborhood. And staff finds this request complies with all the amendment standards found in the city zoning land development regulations, and staff is recommending approval of the proposed text amendment. And here is the tentative schedule for this effort to proceed. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions.
TK, let's start with you. Any questions?
Thank you, yes, I have a few questions. The, the height incentive for the workforce housing, I noticed that the, there was language in there that says that the workforce housing doesn't have to be on-site, it could be within one mile of that development. So theoretically, that could be in other parts of, not in the overlay district, is that?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. And, I know the infrastructure improvements, you know, one of the issues, you know, sustainability is something that the city's been tackling and dealing with, especially on Flagler, on the south end, and we have some of those issues in the north end, too. Can you talk about some of the stormwater potential upgrades that could, that would need to be happened in that area, in the Northwood, I'm sorry, in the North Flagler Overlay District as far as maintaining, you know, good stormwater drainage?
This can include improvements to the roadways, such as curbing, but it also can include improvements to seawalls, public seawalls, let me say that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Gene, any questions?
No, you might have to come back to me.
Okay, Patrick?
I do have one regarding the active use liners on the sides. So, I guess, understanding how these, most of these parcels are occurring, what would be the benefit of having an active use liner on the side of the building?
It's primarily for properties that are adjacent to public park uses, so, adjacent to Osprey Park, these projects or properties would have to provide the active use liner, and that would better protect the visual intrigue for, of the public that are within the parks, to not be able to see vehicles.
So it's only next to the open space parcels?
Yes, that's correct.
Not just if it's a single-family or whatever?
Now, we initially brought that to, we initially proposed that at the community workshop meetings, but we got a little pushback from that, so we decided to just require for properties adjacent to public park uses.
And this would be on the lots that are above, greater than a hundred foot width, or less than, or both?
Both.
Is on the parcels that are less than one hundred feet, if you're meeting the already requirement of the basic setbacks, and taking out the active, the side active use liners, functionally, you're really negating significant area for parking, and with a very narrow lot, if that makes sense? Concerned if there's...
Yes, oh yes, so as Director, Development Director Rick was explaining, so, projects can come under the existing zoning regulations, so the underlying zoning districts of MF32, and they would not have to go through this process of the North Flagler Overlay District process, so that would be an administrative review. But if they, if projects come in requesting additional heights, using the height incentive options, incentives, then this would apply, the active use liner building would apply, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I guess it just, it's confusing to me, a lot that's only a hundred foot wide, if they're going to ask for the height, which most certainly they would be, with those, if they're adjacent to that specific context, it's going to be very difficult to accommodate podium parking.
Potentially, yes.
I was just curious, have staff's done any analysis of that, you know, to that level of detail?
No, we have not.
Okay. Anything more? Patrick?
That's it.
Okay, Will?
So, so just help me understand the height, it's, is it two sixty on top of, if they went for the workforce housing and they could get the maximum two sixty?
That's on top of the forty foot, forty feet permitted base height.
Okay, so not on top of the two forty, so couldn't, you couldn't have a five hundred foot building?
No, so the maximum would be three hundred feet.
Three hundred, okay.
If that was the route that was taken, yeah.
All right. On the workforce housing commitment within a mile, is that a commitment to build? is that a commitment to build or is that contributed to a fund that just sits out in the ether until somebody wants to build it?
So, that's a commitment to build for that specific requirement. But there's also the option for a buyout with the city. And that would be just contributing funds to the city's housing trust fund.
Okay. And then it said something in here about submerged land is also included in the calculation?
Yes.
So, the lot could be significantly smaller and you would have a more intensive use on the lot, but you're counting land that's underwater?
Yes, which a majority of the projects along, within this area have been calculating submerged lands within their total calculation.
Okay. And and then on the side setbacks, it said something there about where, what it's next to dictates how deep the setback is? Or is it always a twenty-five foot or thirty foot setback based on the height?
So, are you referring to this?
Yeah, so, so if they do over two hundred feet, let's say they do the workforce housing incentive, they're gonna have a thirty foot setback on each side of the property and seventy feet from the road.
So, seventy feet from the road for the portion above two hundred feet. But
Okay.
So, it's for portions of the buildings that have to be set back, but not the entire building?
Okay, and so on the sides, is that the same way you're viewing it?
Yes, for portions of the building.
So, let's say you had a podium and a parking structure, right? How far would the parking structure be from the adjacent lot line?
So, from, so the portion of the parking structure from zero to forty feet in height, that would have to be set back fifteen feet from the side property line.
Okay, so let's say you had a, let's say you had a ten-story garage and a thirty-story tower, right? And similar to the project we did two months ago, where you have the, the parking structure up front, the tower in the back, right? The section where the tower is would be, what, twenty-five feet?
It would.
It would be twenty feet because it's above forty feet if you had a ten-story?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, and then when you get to the tower, it would have to be thirty feet?
Yes, that's correct.
Setback?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Answer your questions, Peter.
In your exhibit item number three, just a small point, you're talking about fenestrations that will be provided at each building story, NFPA requirements. That should be building code requirements, not NFPA.
You said under architectural?
Yeah, that's under Exhibit A, Item Three.
And you said that would be a building code requirement, not a National Fire Protection Association?
It should be building code. Fenestration is discovered by the building code for impact. Just take a look at that, okay? The other thing that I'm still not clear about is the city planning to do an overall plan indicating the engineering design for Flagler, indicating all the areas that are to receive landscaping. So, a developer comes in and has some location as to where they can apply the funds? Or the city is gonna do all of this work in the future?
The intent now, and if you, I think Mr. Pivko, you were here back when we were approving the Huzenga one thousand fifty-nine unit development, the six tower concept. The decree was made back then that North Flagler is never going to be widened. So, we have the existing right of way in place. So, as developers come in, we have an established right of way that they will have to abide by these standards. The way the infrastructure enhancement incentive works, they would contribute funds based on the height necessary that would come to the city. We would create a line item that would be part of our capital improvements program, which would then be rolled into a capital improvement plan, which we update every year as part of our budget.
Yeah, but Rick, if there's only, you said four or five lots, potential redevelopment lots, are they gonna generate enough funds to do all of Flagler and everything else the city wants to do for landscaping?
I mean, certainly, there's gonna be enough generated with that incentive at that cost of thirty-four thousand three hundred per foot of height. So, that could go into the fund and then we could actually put trees on lots that aren't being redeveloped and continue a streetscape theme or something down the street. Like, should be plenty of money to do something like that.
Should be, okay. Is a developer not more capable of doing all this landscaping in front of the property when they're doing the project?
That's what we're saying. That's what we're saying, is that that would be an obligation.
Right.
And then with additional funds that are contributed toward that line item, we could fill in the gaps where redevelopment is not taking place if need be.
Okay. How does this number come up, thirty-eight thousand? What multiplication factor, division factor was used?
I have a formula. It's a little complicated. Let me find it. So, again, this goes back to, this goes back to when we did the Curry Mixed Juice District. If you remember, we had a Core One, a Core One A, and a Core Two district. They all had a base height of one hundred eleven feet. Jeff Green owned two lots on either side. One of our goals and desires is to extend Northwood Road from the Northwood Commons Development on the west end of Northwood Road, bring it across Dixie Highway and tie into the new entrance of our thirty-five million dollar Curry Park. I jokingly refer to that as Clematis North. That's our goal. So, with the incentive that we established on either side of the extended roadway of Northwood, we came up with a price to do that link would be about six million dollars. So, you see here that, that those parcels have a base height of one eleven. You achieve a height of three hundred and fifty feet with that incentive in the Curry Mixed Juice District. That's a two hundred and thirty-nine foot increase. The price of the road back in twenty twenty-one was six million dollars. So, when you divide the six million dollars by the two thirty-nine, it's approximately twenty-five thousand, which is the fee per foot in the Curry Mixed Juice District. We wanted to adjust that number to reflect the current price. And, you know, for those of you who do a lot of building permit work, in February and August, we have an ICC Building Valuation Table. So, if somebody comes in and builds a big tower, a big office building, a big hotel, and they say that the permit should be, or the value of the, the unit of the tower is fifty million dollars, if it doesn't look right to us, we'll go back to this valuation table that we get twice a year. And in, in Palm Beach County, most everything is built in this one B category. So, we look at that and we basically extrapolated the twenty-five thousand we were using Curry a couple of years ago, extrapolated that. And that's how we arrived at the thirty-four thousand three hundred. So, there, there was a method to the madness.
Okay. Add one more.
And that's the actual math there.
I'll pass, I'll, I'll come back if I have another question.
Any questions?
I just need a little bit more clarification on the workforce housing incentive with the additional heights. And I see the two hundred and sixty feet, and you put it on top of the forty, you say it cannot exceed three hundred feet. Help me understand the part that you highlighted with the submerged acreage of the two point five acres and that maximum height of two hundred feet?
Can you repeat the question?
It's on the bottom of the first page. I, I didn't quite understand that maximum two hundred feet as it relates to the maximum three hundred feet.
So, are you referring to this table here?
Yeah, this one at the bottom.
Yes. This one? Okay. So, the maximum additional height increase that can be achieved with the workforce housing incentive is two hundred and sixty feet above the permitted base height of forty feet. So, forty plus two hundred and sixty five, I mean, two hundred and sixty equals a total building height of three hundred feet.
I got that.
That's how it works.
So, the additional two hundred feet at the bottom, tell me about that.
Additional two hundred?
It's not additional. It does, it says the maximum additional height.
Oh, it says otherwise, the maximum additional height increase is two hundred feet. So, if a property is less than two point five acres in size, then the maximum additional height increase is two hundred feet, which would result in a maximum building height of two hundred and forty feet.
If it's less than, okay. Thank you.
Hey, Deborah, was your question answered?
I'm good. Thank you.
Sam?
I just have one question regarding the workforce housing. I think obviously it's very smart to let developers build them offsite because Flagler Drive might not be the most conducive place for that. What's the, it says that they can, instead of building the workforce housing, they can actually just donate into a fund? Is there a specified amount per unit that they have to donate into a fund?
So, that is an arrangement that would be have to made between the city's housing and community development department with the, and with the developer. I'm not sure if there's an exact amount calculation for that at the moment.
So, okay.
That's something that's negotiated with our Director of Housing and Community Development. We have an established housing trust fund that we have, that we've been using since we started building workforce units, not only downtown, but citywide. And it's based on a breakdown of the mix of units, usually eighty to a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And we calculate what that buyout rate should be. We negotiate that with the applicant.
Okay, so there's no set price. It's just at, at the time of an application, they have to negotiate?
Correct.
The price with them?
Correct.
Got it.
And, and Rick, these are substantial numbers, as I recall.
Yes.
Yeah, I will, I was thinking, is there any examples you can give us? Because I remember a couple and I was impressed by how much the city got.
Well, we had a, providing a little background, we had, our first incentive was downtown maybe four or five years ago that Anna Ponte and I worked on. And what we did is we granted additional height, an additional FAR. And then what we said is with that additional height and development density we give you in the form of FAR, you have to set aside twenty percent of those units for workforce. In downtown, because land prices were so expensive, what we did, it was a twenty-year workforce housing program. What we did with the developers is we said with the tax increment that you generate with your project, we will basically bridge the difference between the market rate up here and what we're, what we're asking you to charge. So, that gap, the city was actually gonna fund through the increment created by that own project for a period of ten years. And then the developer was on their own for the second ten years of the twenty-year horizon. Then we adopted Resolution three oh six dash twenty-one, I think it was.
Why, why, why?
No, 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 it was a simple one. It was just a resolution. But then that got trumped by the live local, no pun intended. It got trumped by the live local ordinance. And then we came back the following year, approved the new ordinance, which basically allowed properties within the city to double their density, provided they set aside twenty-five percent of the units as workforce. So, using the example here, if somebody wanted to do that, and we have properties all over the city, if you remember eighty-one eleven South Dixie, the very south end of the city, they utilize that ordinance and increase the number of residential units they could get. Eighty-one eleven, which has the retail grocery store in the front, I'm hoping they announce that grocery shortly. And then the Woodfield Development in the back, they originally were limited to two hundred and ten residential units by the zoning. They used the workforce housing ordinance to get up to three hundred and fifty-eight. And I believe that development has ninety workforce units. So, you double your density, but you have to set aside twenty-five percent. And the thought was doubling the density, in the case of NF thirty-two, the extra thirty-two units per acre is worth doing twenty-five percent workforce housing. You may remember one that you guys saw as well, the Forum Three. There was a development off of Forum Way where all the office buildings are. It was, I believe, a thirty thousand, one-story square foot office came in, sought approval from you and the commission, and they are doing an eighty, an eight-story unit with workforce housing. So, we have about six or seven that came in utilizing that program. So, it's been fairly successful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Peter.
Rick, there's a project already in the process of review, right? Great West or Great Somebody? It's, are they gonna be?
Oh, there's, there's two projects in right now.
Two of them?
Yeah, we refer to it, it's the property next to Alba and then Fifty-four Hundred North Flagler.
Do they have to comply with this new regulation?
It would not.
They would not, okay. In your meetings with the community, what was the feedback in terms of the proposed heights?
I, I think they're gonna speak tonight, so I'd probably let them. I, I think for the most part, it was, we had a series of, of good meetings, starting with the initial meeting with Commissioner Ward. I think they see two forty as, as a, as a nice balance primarily because at the time, Alba was coming in and then Apogee, if you remember, came in in front of this body. And that project was denied. They were approximately three hundred feet. We met with related group who was the developer there. And we told them that if you are able to reduce the building, you get it down to a height of approximately two forty to be consistent with Alba, then we could support your project. And that's in fact what they did. They came back, modified the plan, brought the height down, and it got approved by this board and the commission.
Sam, do you have another question?
Yeah, I guess, you know, there's, there's a lot of incentives provided for obviously giving to an infrastructure fund and, and providing for workforce housing. And I know there's a lot of projects that have come in for approvals and a lot have been approved. Do we have like a, a general idea how many, in terms of finished product units have been finished and provided workforce housing units based on any of these new regulations or, or new incentives, I guess, for, for some of this new development?
It's hard to quantify. I mean, we could sit down and try to do that. Most of them are kind of in production right now. But I'll mention Flagler Station at the intersection of Banyon Boulevard and Tamarind. That is a ninety-eight unit development, all workforce housing. They did not take advantage of the workforce housing, but through other venues and other mechanisms were able to provide a workforce housing project. The Grand, which is located at Third Street, built by Affiliated Development, they have a large number of workforce housing units in that development. Chris lives there, right? So, you know, it's a good opportunity. We had at one point, I think, three or four employees in, in my department that were living there and walking to work every day. So, kind of some of the things we're trying to do. Affiliated is also doing another project called The Spruce, a little further north. That also has a workforce housing component. Eighty-one eleven Mercer Park, that's also been before this board by the Jefferson Terminal District. They've done two projects, are in the process of finishing their second. We have the Forum Three. So, there's a few that are scattered throughout the city. The mayor set a bar of trying to get three hundred workforce units. We hit that pretty quickly. He raised it to six hundred. I think we surpassed that as well. So, he keeps raising the bar and we keep meeting it. So, some of the things we've done with this, you know, these incentives are really out of the box. And, you know, a lot of cities are talking to us about how we're doing this. And, you know, they're, they're trying to take that to other municipalities as well.
Okay, cool.
Will, do you have a question?
When you talk about the workforce housing, that are, you know, either been produced or in phases of produce, are they using the funds that are going into that fund that this theoretically, if you didn't build the units within, you know, the one mile, you would contribute to the fund? Does the fund help developers who are building workforce housing?
Hypothetically, that could be done, but in this particular case, they're utilizing the workforce housing to get, for instance, additional density. So, they don't need the funds. But those that are doing the buyout and a five-twelve Clematis, are they doing some workforce units there? Yeah, yeah. So, five-twelve Clematis right at the intersection here, they're gonna be providing some as well. So, the, the thought is that both the Grand and, and The Spruce utilize CRA funds. So, if there's an opportunity to create a housing trust fund, a workforce fund, and we can help supplement a little amount? A little amount of dollars to a developer to make ends meet and get the project done, that's the whole purpose of the buyout, that if, if people wanna go that route. We have a fund that can be used to assist developers in creating.
So it's really not a fund that the city would find a developer, grab a piece of land and say, hey, we got thirty million dollars in this fund, let's go build some workforce housing?
We, we haven't done that yet, but that's not to say that we couldn't do it, we just don't have that type of revenue at this point, early, early in the program.
Second question I have is more about this, so um, on the aggregate of upland and submerged, excuse me. The aggregate of upland and submerged, is there a ratio of how much upland you would have? Have to have in order to utilize the submerged, I mean, could you have an acre and a half of submerged? And a half acre of land and have a thirty story?
There's a ratio based on the size of the lot, and I'm gonna defer to Angela if I get this wrong, but I believe you can use seventy five percent. Of the submerged lands if you have a certain acreage, and I can't remember if it's one or two acres, two acres, yeah.
So if you have two acres of upland, you can use seventy five percent of your submerged in your calculation?
Have I got a submerged land deal for you?
I think if it's more than two acres, you can use a hundred percent, if it's less, then you can only use seventy five percent, but we'll double check that, but.
Uh, so, I'm just, sorry, so.
Yeah, typ- typically, the, the amount of submerged land, you know, it doesn't usually exceed an acre, you know, the upland is, is by far the, the greatest, but usually there's a small piece. If you go back and look at.
Cause that was the deal with Apogee, right, we basically said.
They had a small amount, yeah.
Yeah.
So when you start looking at some of the, the, the property lines, you see like out here, you see where some of the submerged lands, where you don't see existing land. Uh, but generally, it's pretty close to the shoreline.
Okay, yeah, I mean, cause it would, you know, it'd be important if you're putting a code together, right, that the. If the submerged land is bigger than the upland land, then you shouldn't be building a project that's, even with workforce, that's three hundred feet, right, on a small parcel.
Right.
Just wouldn't be conducive. Okay, thanks.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, one more question for you, Rick, could, could you put up the map again of the, the three parcels that you identified? That would be, that would be impacted by this, that are currently, I guess, undeveloped?
Well, the graphic, the graphic I have up right now are the ones that we think could be redeveloped, the ones highlighted in yellow are the two that have come in. That are going through review as we speak.
So the three with the box, the three with the outlines?
The, the uh, the two in yellow are the ones that have been submitted, again, there's a match line, so the one on the right lies above, and then this is Apogee that was just approved, oops. So everything that's not in red, technically has the potential of redevelopment.
Patrick, to answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just, so the majority of those potentially developable parcels. Like you said, are at or around a hundred foot wide?
Correct.
Thanks.
Have a quick question for Rick, um. I know this is a, a city initiated revision, but what prompted um, the need for the change, other than, you know, limitations on, on building?
It, it was the initial meeting we had with the neighbors that you're probably gonna hear from tonight. Um, that were concerned about um, the development happening on the north end, it's kind of ironic, you know, for the last five years. Um, or prior to the last five years, there was a lot of complaints that nothing's happening on the north end, we were seeing a lot of development on the south end, and. With the COVID migration, you know, it's been crazy in the city, even to this day, this year, we're having the biggest year we've ever had in the history of the city in terms of building permits and business tax and. Um, but we're starting to see now, with some of the changes that this board was instrumental in assisting us with, with the Curry Mixed Juice changes. With what we did with the Northwood Square, the Northwood Commons Project, the redevelopment of Curry Park, we're starting to see that redevelopment. Um, move up further north, um, and it's a little bit of a, a shock to a lot of people because it's a lot happening very quickly. You know, we went ten years in, in the Curry Mixed Juice District with basically no development, then all of a sudden, we brought you Alara, we brought you Pine Street, you know, you're gonna see Shorecrest, you're gonna see the Ritz Carlton, you saw the. Ritz Carlton, so it's a lot of activity happening pretty quickly, and that development that we experienced over the last few years and continue to experience in Curry Park. That's continuing to move north along this corridor.
Okay, any other questions of staff? And if not, I, I think we have some cards from the public who wishes to be heard, I have a number of cards, we're gonna read the comments and the record. But for now, I'm gonna call you, and I'd like two at each podium, so at this podium, who can have Kent Wulmering. And then Alex Hill on this podium, and then on this podium, please Angela Osborne and Claudia Kirk Barto. Go ahead, sir, please state your name.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Kent Wulmering, and I've been in front of this board, thank you chairman and board members. Um, I live directly next to Apogee, which we worked through to get approved. Um, and we work with the staff. On this overlay district, uh, the sad part about the overlay district is the um, Alba Reserve that's in and the. Apogee and the Great Gulf Projects, if they were in this overlay, they would contribute almost twenty million dollars to our neighborhood. Um, and they're not part of this, um, the property owners, myself and my neighbor, um, in reading this. Um, we have a hundred foot lot together, uh, we would like to be able to build what Apogee built. Even though we would have to pay six point eight million dollars to our neighborhood, um, which we. It is what it is, we want a plan for our neighborhood, and our neighbor have worked together. I think that we should be treated the same as Apogee, we are our neighbors, and the rest of the people. This is very difficult for me, we've worked really hard, we love our neighborhood, our neighborhood is a great spot, and I've been there twenty three years. And we appreciate all the work the board does and the staff does for us, I've been developing here for forty five years, Rick and I have been developing together for forty years. We just like to have a coherent plan, and there's some tweaks in it that we'd like to see. Um, the workforce housing, um, we're doing a building downtown, we have to build twenty units. And our number to contribute to the fund is two hundred thousand, which is four million, into a fund to the city, and the city, we're not sure where the money goes. I'm back to Will's question, um, where does it go? We are working on our downtown project to actually build these units in the downtown, cause we need workforce housing. Um, I just think that my neighbor Lucy, whose daughter's here, she's the president of the homeowners, we just want parity. And not where we are, um, I don't know what the word is. We're just not treated unfairly, cause we have to pay six million dollars to do something that we appreciate, the Apogee. Has contributed two hundred fifty thousand to our neighborhood, and in meetings with uh, the Gulf Group. They're looking to do whatever work we have to do at, at the fire station, I appreciate all your stuff, and this was difficult.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
I'll hear from you.
Hi, good evening, Alex Hill, a member of the board of the Palm Beach Sailing Club, um, speaking on behalf of the club, authorized as a recent board meeting where I reviewed the overlay district with our board. Uh, I wanna commend the staff uh, for the effort they've put into this and the outreach to the community and the two workshops that were held. At this point, um, I've noticed a couple of things that have changed incrementally since the workshop that was hosted in fact, out on the nineteenth at the Palm Beach Sailing Club. Which was the um, workforce housing bonus height, going from uh, two hundred additional feet to two hundred and sixty. Uh, the infrastructure incentive going from a hundred feet to two hundred feet, so I'd say between the workshop with the community. And then the staff write-up that is being discussed and presented tonight, that's, that's quite a change, um, how the community may feel about that is to be, to be seen. Um, between the staff write-up, which I was emailed, and then what was just shown tonight, was a further change. With the uh, designation that the two hundred and sixty feet would only be provided if the upland and submerged land of a subject property exceeded two point five acres. I think the issue of submerged land, as is noted by one of the members of the board, when you're making new regulations, this should be thoroughly understood. And as a property owner, Palm Beach Sailing Club, we have one point nine acres of upland and one point four nine acre submerged land. That is a substantial amount, and I've been recently through quite a ordeal. With a Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, to have them properly recognize that submerged land for our property on their website. And I will say that the uh, overlay district study that has been done, and Rick, Mr. Green knows as well, I've brought up the fact that their boundary outline excludes our submerged land. Why? If you go to the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser site and look at the polygons that they're using, they are often excluding the submerged land. So specifically, one of the properties, fifty four hundred North Flagler, uh, which is known as possibly the Great Gulf Development. Is two point four five nine acres of upland, but there is deeded to them zero point eight six five acres of submerged land, which will take that property three point three point two five acres. Thus exceeding the two and a half acre requirement to meet this additional bonus height. Given that, again, I think it's very important that we really would look deep into the submerged land and make sure. That is well represented when making any decisions, thank you very much.
And before you speak, is um, is Kirk Willema still here? Kirk? I'm sorry, whoever, come forward, and then after them, please, um, the last two cards I have are Brian Seymour and Kent Tuma, go ahead ma'am, please.
Good evening, my name is Angela Ogburn, and I'm the current president of the Northwood Harbor Historic Association. Thank you for giving our board the opportunity to speak tonight. For over five years, our community has been advocating for a master plan, particular as, particularly as. We've watched development steadily move into the north end, the purpose of a master plan, or in this case tonight is the Flagler Overlay. Is to ensure consistency and a cohesive vision that supports both new development and the existing community. We have held several meetings with city staff and hosted two community meetings to provide input and feedback. Despite these efforts, the updated version of the plan was only provided to us this past Friday, in preparation for tonight's meeting. While we appreciate the progress, we believe the plan still needs refinement to ensure it does not create inequities for property owners within the overlay. Additionally, we want assurance that the incentives we've requested remain within our neighborhood boundaries, not outside of our boundaries. And that are not shifted elsewhere, if this plan moves forward, we hope the city will continue working with us to close, uh, working closely with our community. To ensure our voices remain part of the process, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, um, chairman, board members, I'm Claudia Kirk Barto, and I'm at fifty, uh, five ten fifty first street. And I'm also serving as the vice president of the Northwood Harbor Neighborhood Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. And um, and the progress that has been made um, on the north end, a master plan. That we've been requesting, as you heard, for a long time, and have worked with the city. We wanted to see some consistency, because we were meeting with these developers, and we're all volunteers, as you know. Um, some of us work and some of us don't, but um, we, I make the time to be able to be at these meetings because it's really important. Um, and. We individually have been trying to get the infrastructure repaired and updated in the north end of the city, because it's been neglected for far too long. And as you heard from Rick Green, we've been working with uh, the city staff, we've received. As challenging as this is, we did receive that thirty page document on Friday, and as I've already said, I am a layperson, I'm not a quick study. Um, and thirty pages is a lot to look at, um, but we would love to be able to understand, even tonight, we saw a new red area, it looks different than what we understood where the overlay is going, so. We would love to understand where that is, um, we know there's transformation happening throughout the city. And um, we understand it's going to happen in our neighborhood. But um, we are a workforce housing neighborhood, so we'd love to see the other incentives in our community. And not um, the workforce housing going into, as Angela said, a black hole, that infrastructure, the roads. Not just above the roads and the curbing, but under the roads, the pipes are falling in, and we definitely need um, those fixed, and. That's not always on the developers to do that, and um, if this is the first time that you're seeing that twenty five, page number twenty five, how do you think that we feel? Um, I know the city, we'd love to see, um, I'm sorry, I'm losing my place, but. Um, if you move forward tonight, we'd, we'd wanna be ensured that our neighborhood will see the millions in incentives promised to implement. Um, in the Northwood Harbor area, not just somewhere else in the city, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little taller. Uh, good evening, my name is Brian Seymour, I'm the attorney for the developer owner at fifty four hundred North Flagler. I had to just rewrite some of my comments, because tonight is the first time that I heard that our property would not be in the overlay. Because that's not how the text was written that I read, and I don't know what text you were given tonight, because I did not see that either. So I don't know what's there, I, you, you had a lot of questions, there's some of the questions we had, I actually read code a lot. And I had a struggle to get through this in the, the short time period uh, since we got it as well, so Claudia, don't feel too bad, got me too. Um, and so, you know, getting this text with all of that, I, I noticed a couple of huge problems, including the fact of the. The way in which the money was calculated, because this is not Curry Park, in Curry Park, if you get height, you get additional units. This is a density, not an FAR area, they aren't the same, and so I questioned the nexus between the way things had been done. Maybe it's there, I have not had a chance to really dig in, see, get the backdrop, get the background, sit down with the staff. Uh, and go through that between Friday uh, and today. So ultimately, what we're looking for, and we're not saying we need to be out of the overlay if the overlay is fair. If there's recognition for the fact that not every property is the same, and there's a way to do this, and Mr. Tuma's gonna talk about some of this. Then we actually might be able to work together to do this, so that there's assurances. For everybody, including the neighborhood going forward, and we have been working with the neighbors, uh, we will continue to work with the neighbors. And so we just need time to be able to sit down and see if we could come up with something that actually can work, that is fair, that recognizes the differences in the various properties. Uh, that doesn't require six point eight million dollars, uh, to get something that someone else got for effectively two hundred and fifty thousand, which I grant it, that was my project, right? The reason that worked is because that was a discussion we had with the neighborhood about what they needed to provide directly to them. Which is the way the system can work, obviously, very well, um, that does mean you don't have to have an overlay, it doesn't mean you shouldn't have an overlay, it means the overlay should be done fairly. And in consideration of all factors, so if it stays the way it is, we don't wanna be in it, because it takes away rights that we have today. Um, but we think there's a better path for everybody, we just don't think it can be decided tonight, and what we're really asking for is time. And we don't think that you should make a recommendation without having us to have the time to actually dig in a little bit on the language, understand it. Be able to sit down with the staff and work through it, and some of that may be revised, we, we've done this before, we've worked together on the Curry Mixed Juice District language. Um, and it might take a little bit longer, but it allows us to try to at least work together with an alternative that will actually recognize the differences and be fair to everybody. Uh, both the neighborhood, the city, and to fifty four hundred North Flagler and everyone else on the east side of Flagler, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kent Tuma with Urban Design Studio, here today on behalf of fifty four hundred North Flagler, as Mr. Seymour indicated, we do represent a project, so I wanna be very clear about that. Um, the item in front of you, the overlay today, in big picture, we have been meeting with the neighbors, it's actually been a very enjoyable experience working our way through the process. And that process needs to continue, but I just wanted to give you my opinion on one item, which I think is really important. Kent indicated his lot was a hundred feet wide, and he would be able to have two hundred and forty feet, by paying six point nine million dollars, I, I understand that. I, I understand that. The lot that we're working on, other lots are wider. For example, the, um, I believe that the code should reflect the lot width and not necessarily the height of the building. The height of the building should be reflected upon that lot width. So by way of example, Elba, what you've heard about tonight, is a hundred and fifty feet wide lot. Its height is two hundred and forty-five feet. The project that I'm working on is two hundred and twenty feet wide lot. So it's wider. Therefore, the building can be more central. And in exchange for that, maybe allow it to go higher and aggregate it together. I also truly believe that by allowing that to happen, to have the height and the width related to one another, you will actually have aggregation of lots. You saw on that slide that there were different sides of lots throughout. I think that there'll be more aggregate, aggregation. I think developers will figure out on how to get those lots together. Therefore, there would be less buildings because they would be aggregated together. Um, with that being said, I am going to sit down very quickly this evening, but I appreciate your time, and I really believe that aggregating height and width of lot is an important component. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have some cards to read into the record. Nicole Ambler says, "I am here to make sure our neighborhood receives the incentive." Northwood. Elizabeth Porcoski says, "We need a plan with incentives back to Northwood Harbor, used in Northwood Harbor and for Northwood Harbor." Mary Murphy says, she says, she attached, oh, here it goes. "I'd like to ask the city to prioritize updating the infrastructure between Forty-Fifth and Fifty-Ninth Street, especially between North Flagler Drive and Broadway. With all of the construction incoming projects, this area needs some serious intention improvement. These long overdue upgrades would make life so much better for everyone who lives there." Is there anyone else who has not been heard who wishes to be heard? And if not, we'll bring them back. I don't know, Rick, if any of you or the staff wish to respond to anything you heard, not required. Would I give you that opportunity?
I'll just say very quickly that, um, a lot of what we're discussing tonight is, is similar, almost identical to what we've been discussing in the community meetings for the last two months. So while the report came out on, on Thursday or Friday of last week, that's kind of standard with all our planning board packets. The content itself hasn't changed much over the last two to three months. Some of the tweaks that were referenced were actually tweaks that were made in discussions that we had with Ms. Ogborne. The original, um, area that we were looking at, if I got the wrong glasses on. But this area originally, we extended to the west all the way to FEC Railroad. And, uh, after our discussion with her, we said, "Well, I don't think we would be adverse to bringing it into Broadway um, to better refining that area where the infrastructure improvements would be spent."
And are we clear, too, that the two projects that have, that are in the works now won't be subject to this overlay?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff? And if not, we'll bring them back to the board.
Yeah, just one clarification. So there's two projects that are in, and how many potential parcels are left that would be falling into the overlay?
This is what we suspect could potentially redevelop. Now, if you look at lots nine through twenty-eight right here, those are primarily single-family lots. So if somebody were to develop a high-rise, that would be a tremendous amount of aggregation somebody would have to do, um, at this location. Um, some of these are not for sale. You know, with most of the major projects that have come in here, we have always encouraged the developer to try to get the parcel next to them to get a bigger lot. Um, we do have a distinction. Again, if you have a bigger property, your FAR increases. So the comment that was made by Mr. Seymour that, you know, you got a bigger lot, well, you get a perk for having a bigger lot. You get a larger FAR.
And then the net change number on this, this is for, what does that represent?
So we, we did a count of what's on the property today. So this is traffic that everybody's experiencing on a daily basis. So of the properties not highlighted, highlighted in red, there are approximately a hundred and forty-seven residential units. There's a potential, but don't hold me to this. It's within a few units, of course. Um, but if everybody developed at the maximum number, and that doesn't always happen, but if everybody did, the potential would be five hundred eighty-eight. So the four forty-one, the net, represents the additional units that could potentially be built if everybody maxed out at the MF thirty-two number.
Okay. It's not a big number.
It's not.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we'll bring them back to the board for discussion. What are your thoughts?
I feel like there needs to be more dialogue with the neighborhood. And I need they, I think they need to get on the same page. I think the report getting dropped on them, especially with the sixty-feet and a hundred-feet variance, you know, on Thursday, isn't clearly not what they were expecting uh, in terms of the contents of the report. So, you know, I think one more round of meetings to get everybody on the same page is not going to hurt. You, you are transitioning from what was a, a low-rise level residential neighborhood to now a high-rise intensive neighborhood. And, uh, you know, I've been in West Palm Beach for twenty-two years, you know, and change is uncomfortable. But, you know, as a taxpayer and a homeowner, I would at least want to know that I had the chance to fully express my voice and that it had some meaning or impact in how the city operates. And, uh, the other thing I kind of feel is that, uh, you know, this overlay is coming at a point when most of the major development has been spoken for. And so, you know, and there's two other projects that are already in the hopper that aren't going to be part of this. It's like, okay, well, you know, if you're going to do the overlay, then it should apply to everybody who has not broken ground yet or fully permitted, so.
Other comments?
So if you were going to object based on a standard not being met, what standard would that be?
That's your case question to you.
Yeah. So if you were going to object, uh, based on a standard not being met, what standard would you cite?
I tell you what, while he's looking at this, and we'll, and we'll come back to Gene's important question. Other comments while this is being looked at?
I guess I'll go.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Now, I, I feel like the intent of what is being proposed here is sound generally. But I feel that for whatever reason, I'm getting this impression that it's being rushed to preclude, you know, future development that is not going to be consistent with what the neighborhood and the city wants. Uh, there's clearly some technical kinks that just, I mean, I mentioned the parking earlier. Uh, I think generally, thinking about what is left to develop, I think this, the way things are currently written, it's, it's generally going to disincentivize, uh, future development. And I don't, I, it's, it might be counterproductive, counterintuitive, but, um, I would be inclined to some of your comments, Will, that I think perhaps a continuance on the matter to further tweak some of the technical components in the language, that there's some consistency, um, in what was understood in the neighborhood meetings. That's just, that's my general feeling.
Other comments?
So, I think, um, you know, a lot of the development in, in, around the city, you know, people rush into getting projects out there because they feel like a, a time crunch, obviously, the time value of money and whatnot. And I think a lot of the times, things turn out to be different than their expectation, and that's why a lot of things stall out or don't get built that maybe were planned to be built. Um, and I feel in this specifically, I mean, the incentive structure, I, I think the incentive structure, certainly hearing from the neighborhood, they're welcoming the higher buildings to take advantage of the incentives because they want, certainly they want the infrastructure. And I think that the incentive structure should be, first of all, I mean, is it properly aligned with the developer's interest? So will developers actually take advantage of the incentive structure? Is it the proper amount of money for the incentives that they're, that they're getting? Will they actually take advantage of the maximum incentives to put the maximum amount of money in, into the, into the pool? And, you know, as mentioned with the, with the housing, to, to buy off the housing, uh, which, you know, clearly, I, I wouldn't think that any of these waterfront developments would be, uh, building within their building, the affordable housing, but there should be at least a defined, um, parameter that they would have to buy out the, the affordable housing so that at least they know, uh, what that cost is going to be, and that cost is aligned, that makes sure that they will take advantage of it. Because I think the goal would be to have as much money raised between the affordable housing and the infrastructure improvements so that everyone developing here would want to take advantage of those, uh, you know, those bonuses for, for everything. So I think those definitely should be better defined, uh, not only in specific dollar amounts, but also, you know, aligned with making sure that they're proper with what the developers actually would pay for. They might say, "That's too expensive. We're not going to bother. We'll just build the, the height that we can build. It's, we're not going to pay the extra money for the infrastructure." So I think those things should be better defined in, in any kind of overlay.
Deborah, Peter, any comments? Okay, Peter?
Yeah, the, the issue is, is this, uh, the number, uh, that developers are going to have to pay for the extra units. I mean, these are waterfront properties, and the likelihood of affordable housing component being significant in any of these projects is slim. So we're down to the cash situation and what the city's going to do with all that money. I guess the commission are going, is going to have to decide how they want to spend it eventually. But, um, I think we, I'm okay with postponing it for, you know, thirty days, sixty days, whatever, whatever's needed, um, to let the community absorb the new plan and, and understand exactly what is going to potentially be built.
Gene and TK, any comments?
Um, I would say based on the standard of comprehensive plan consistency, um, I, I would think as presented, it, it fails to, um, to meet that standard just based on not only the testimony presented, but, you know, also taking into consideration some of the public comments. Um, I think there is a lot more to hash out. And I think I also agree with Patrick in that, um, you're disincentivizing, um, you know, some developers from maybe pursuing a project like Apogee, who only spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so I'd like to see it flesh out more. And so I would probably want to, uh, you know, take a couple of months or, you know, however long it takes to just kind of flesh out the language and, and understand it better before, um, recommending approval.
TK, any of your thoughts?
Thanks all. I call, uh, my colleagues here and, um, agree that I think, uh, there's a, there's a gap, and we need to close it. And it can take about thirty days to, to do that, maybe sixty, but, um, I'm okay with postponing. My major concern would be the, uh, reinvestment in, in the area, especially on the north end, um, for those who live in the north end, in addition to infrastructure, workforce housing. Um, I understand there was a geographic area for infrastructure improvements, but it's one mile for the, the workforce housing. You know, I'm not under the belief that we're going to have workforce housing in this overlay district, but we would like to see it in the north end. We'd like to see it, um, in the area, um, or at least the district where it's going to be. You take one mile from the south end of this district, and you're in a completely different part of town. So I'd like to see some synergy there, um, and consistency with, uh, making sure that these investments, um, are A utilized, as Sam said, and that developer utilizes these incentives, but that the, but that those resources do go back into the neighborhood and not just into a fund that the commission can do something with and put it in some other part of the city. Um, we'd like to see that investment happen on the north end. So, uh, I'm, I'm okay to continue.
I don't share these views, but I will defer to the wishes of the clear majority of this board. For myself, this came about because there was a need to try to put a cap on how tall these buildings were going. This process has gone on for a long time. There's plenty of opportunities to continue to tweak. We're only the recommending board. The, the, the history has been, a lot of times, we vote on things, and later it gets improved as it works toward ultimate city commission. Two major projects are not going to fall under this because of the delay. We delay this a couple more months, maybe another one or two projects slips in too. So there are trade-offs with delay. And there's trade-offs in building consensus, and we have to balance those. I say with respect to, uh, to the, um, to Ken and to Brian, your projects are not going to be subject to this. So whatever misgivings you may have, you've been told this, you're not going to be under this. So I worry about the delay. I worry about other projects. We may, we may be down, we'll have a perfect thing and apply to a single parcel, and that will be a hollow victory. So for myself, I would move forward on it, but I won't vote against a delay since it seems to be the clear consensus of this board.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, please.
If we did not delay and we did approve, would these changes still be permitted by the commission? Would that, would that be something that?
We do nothing more than recommend.
Sure.
So, so they're, they're free and often ignore what it is we do. But, but I will say this. When the system works at its best, some of the issues we identify, and the, the healthy process continues. For example, there's been more than once where we've voted against a project because of its height, for example. And then the developer worked out something where they lowered the height by the time it went to the city commission. There have been times when there have been some open issues that need to be resolved. We noted those misgivings, but either voted to approve or not to approve, and those issues were resolved by the time it goes to the city commission. Whether we vote to delay it or not, it doesn't necessarily stop them from proceeding, the city wishes to, to proceeding to the city commission anyway. So, um, those are the trade-offs. This has been a long process. The thrust of this was to keep the height down to a level consistent with some of the recent developments. It achieves that. It achieves that. Yes, there's always a lot of details. And if we delay it two months, I promise you, there are going to be other open issues as well. But I think, let's not let the ideal stand in the way of the good. We have something good here. It's still subject to tweaking as it moves the process forward. A delay has its own cost. And we've seen that with two projects already, won't be under this. And if we delay it one or two months, what happens? If, if I'm a developer and I see what's going on, I'm going to rush something in. Anyway, those are my thoughts, but I, I would be intellectually dishonest if I didn't note that it seemed to be the clear majority of this group that they would like to delay it. So I'll look for a motion, whatever motion one wants to make.
Okay, I just want to ask a quick question. Does this actually, like, doesn't limit the height? It just creates a financial obligation to get to that same height?
No, 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 no. I think it, 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 it restricts the height, and it restricts the incentive the height can be. What it does is it says only two ways you get added height. Okay? And one of them is to have the workforce housing, and only then is a certain amount more. I remember, Rick, and you can't respond because we're in discussion. I remember there was one building here where they had a kick into the fund with thirteen million dollars. These are real dollars. These people have to contribute to the fund. And a lot of times, it's used for, for small, single-family homes in West Palm Beach that are on a borderline, and they could be saved. And so they use this money. And the more money they have, the more they can do. So whether they actually devote some of it or put real money into a trust fund where real good things could happen, I mean, so, so to answer your question, it limits the height. It limits how high that height can grow. It limits it to two possible ways that could do it. One's workforce housing, and one is structural improvements. Those are only two ways they get additional height, and that's limited to.
But under this, the two projects that, that are in question, that aren't approved yet but are already kind of in the process, would this restrict how tall they could go?
No, because they, we haven't adopted the overlay yet.
No, I know, but i- if they happen to be in the overlay, would, would their height be?
No, because, because they're, they can't, you can't pass a law, in this case, or pass this kind of ordinance, and apply retroactively.
No, no, no. I mean, imagine they had never gone in for...
Yes, then they would have been subject to it. Is that what you asked?
Correct. But would the height that they're actually proposing to build, would it be low, would it actually be restricted? Or they would just have to pay more money for the same height?
They would not be allowed to build the buildings that they're proposing. It's, it's substantially more that even with the incentive, they can go.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman, oh, so I, I don't know what your opining is considered dicta, but you're introducing a perspective that, um, maybe wasn't presented in testimony, um, which is provoking and compelling.
About the incentive, about how much money is contributed?
No.
The timing.
The, the timing, and then also the, the consequences of... The timing and then also the consequences of, you know, possibly, you know, delaying a recommendation. You know, I don't know that that was...
I don't know, for example, I don't know, Rick, but you can address this. Since this is a city-initiated code revision, do you have to have planning board approval? Are you free to proceed with the city commission?
No, we would want to, pursuant to chapter 163, you are the recommending body to the city commission, so we would want a recommendation from this body.
So if this board were to vote to postpone, then you would not proceed to the city commission?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So that's the risk, is that we may have a few months delay.
Let's say we do postpone it for thirty days, what would the city do within that period? We would continue to meet with the residents. Again, I think a lot of what we've been discussing hasn't really changed much. We'll meet with Ken and Brian and see what tweaks they're suggesting.
Okay.
But I will confess...
You're okay with a thirty day...
I will confess that I have the concern that another developer comes in and gets an application and puts the...
Pretty hard to do site plan, design, everything in thirty days. We didn't know what's already in the pipeline. We don't have to postpone it maybe.
What's the maximum height right now?
So right now, the base height is forty feet.
Excuse me, one at a time. Rick has the floor. Go ahead.
Right now, the base height is forty feet and what we're saying through this overlay is you could go up to 240 feet. If you want to have a workforce housing component of 25% of the units, then we'll allow you to go up to 30 if you have a minimum two and a half.
Rick, one of the tallest of the projects that's in the pipeline, how tall would they be?
I'm sorry?
Of the projects that are in the pipeline now that won't be affected by this, how tall have they been proposed?
I...
It's going to be taller than what's allowed by this overlay.
I believe, and I'll ask Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe one is 379, the other one is 399 somewhere.
And what's the absolute maximum it could be even with all the incentives if the overlay were adopted?
Well, the issue with any planned development, no different than some of the other projects you've approved and pretty much all the ones you've seen on South Flagler recently, again, under the existing MF32, you're allowed 40 feet of height, okay? So for every two feet of height, you have to set back one foot. So they'll be coming back to you with significant waivers on the side and probably rear setbacks to achieve that height because there's no way they're going to get to those heights with the setback waivers that, without the setback waivers that they're going to be seeking.
So we'd be seeing those applications later?
So the reality is, is that they couldn't come, a thirty day delay is not going to change their height.
Correct.
Right now, they're capped at roughly 60 or 70 feet. They could ask for 400, but then they would be coming for this body and trying to justify why they're asking for 400. So I don't see a thirty day delay in creating some sort of unknown, right? And there'd be more clarification. I mean, for me, I would love to see more clarification about the workforce housing. I would love to see more clarification about the submerged versus unsubmerged land. I really wasn't satisfied with the active use explanation. There are a couple of things that just didn't make sense and didn't feel like it's fully baked.
Right.
So if we can get to a more fully baked version in the next thirty days, I would love to pass it.
So I'll move that code revision case number 25-06, we postpone for minimum thirty days.
Okay, we have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will be opposed to this. Okay, that concludes this one. We now move on. We have two more code revision cases and we'll get to have this one all over again next month or two months from now. And I'll be thinking of you, Will, when we do.
Okay. I'll bring in Easter basket or Hanukkah basket, whichever is more appropriate, you let me know.
All right.
Passover, sorry, Passover basket.
That's all right, that's all right. I'm Catholic, my wife's Jewish, she won't go wrong either way. Okay. All right, I think next is code revision case 2502. Oh, our friend.
This is Shetan Bowen.
I was wondering why you're still here because you could have taken the victory lap.
I know. For the record, again, Roger Ramdin with the Office of Shetan Bowen here on behalf of the applicant and you have before you a text amendment. This text amendment is actually twofold. You may recall that the city code, the zoning code, has two layers, if you want to call it that, to it. There's a standard layer which applies to the entire city and then you have the layer that is applicable to the downtown, the downtown master plan. So as part of this request, we have to amend the code in two sections of the code in order to obtain the end goal of defining what a hospital is. The first one will be a change to the downtown master plan, specifically section 94-106, and in that section, we are adding a new definition for hospital. And under the general code, where it's also defined, we are just adding some clarifying language on who licenses hospitals. A little bit of background as to why this came around, and just as a side note, a hospital is already a permitted use in the downtown. So it's not a question of if the use is permitted or not, it's just a matter of clarifying that it is a permitted use in the downtown master plan. But the DMP, I'll call the DMP regulations, classifies a hospital use as a medical office or an office use. So it, and as mentioned before, it doesn't accurately address the licensing agency for a hospital use. So that's the end goal here for this text amendment. In your packet, you should have received the exact language that's being drafted for the DMP code and exactly what we intend to add, defining a hospital, and it's on the screen right now. I'd be happy to go over it if you'd like. And then for the general code, we're just adding who licenses the hospital use.
So Roger, is this to allow the Cleveland Clinic? Is this one of the main...
This is just a request for...
I understand, but is that what's driving this?
I'm not 100% sure on that answer, but I can certainly find out.
I think, yeah, that's a good thing. I'm just trying to make clear it wasn't...
Understood. Like mentioned before, we do have to demonstrate that we comply with certain standards in the code in order to qualify and demonstrate compliance with the code to get this approved. And that section is 9432A. We do believe that we comply with all the standards applicable and staff agrees. And we do request a planning board recommendation of approval is favorable before we go to city commission. On March 12th, the DAC board did unanimously recommend approval. Staff fully supports and as mentioned before, we do comply with the standards. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
You were so efficient in your presentations.
I tried to be, thank you.
At this hour. All right, any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you so much. May we hear from staff?
Good evening. Chris Kimberly, Senior Urban Designer. Just to provide some additional background context on where this code revision came from. So currently within the DMP permitted uses, we generally have three baskets that our uses are categorized in, and this is residential, commercial, and then parking. These are then further broken down in what applicable districts can have them. And then, of course, the actual uses are broken further into subcategories. This is where you'll find your multifamily dwellings, your live-work, single-family, office, hotel, restaurant, and so forth. In this language as it exists today, there is not a definition or there is not a reference to hospitals directly. So the DMP code is effectively silent on hospitals. The assumption has always been that they are permitted within the downtown. We do currently have in the office category a medical office use, but again, this has a little bit different language as it doesn't really offer inpatient services and the emergency care that a office would have. So within that code revision case here, we do create now a explicit reference to hospitals. This will be in our general uses with special requirements. So this is a section within the DMP code which lists uses that maybe require special permitting or additional requirements. So, you know, your bars to have certain licenses, vet clinics, things like that, they're listed here. So this is where we would add our hospital language and definition. And within that, we also include some additional special requirements or standards to allow those hospitals. The first of which being that at least 500 feet from a residential sub-district. Again, this is about a block's width, so a block buffer from residential uses as a hospital is a little bit more intense. We do permit the overnight treatment and 24 hours a day. Again, this is a differentiation from the medical office terminology. We wanted to limit this in terms of a larger site because again, hospitals are typically a more intensive use. So we do have at least a two-acre requirement with direct access to street frontages. And then furthering some requirements there is on the parking. So we again encourage that the parking for a hospital is located within a parking structure or behind a primary building. And then in those instances where perhaps it can't be accommodated, we do create a limitation of 40% of the lot frontage. And this 40% number really comes from trying to, again, create that 40-60 ratio of building to the lot there. This is more in compliance and consistent with our active use requirements. You mentioned the Cleveland Clinic, so in that area is, you know, the Clear Lake District, the active uses is, I believe, on a secondary frontage is only 30%. So this would double the amount of building on that frontage today. And then again, the buffering component is important there. And then lastly, the vehicular circulation, we understand that with a hospital, you're going to have emergency services, so we just required to have a more separate vehicular access for your ambulances and try to differentiate that from the main access of the rest of the hospital. And then as Roger had mentioned, there's also a component where the general code does have a definition for hospitals, so we're not adding a new hospital definition. We're just tweaking it from saying the State Department of Health to the Agency of Healthcare Administration. This is who licensed hospitals within the state of Florida. And then again, we're just specifying that they can extend beyond 24 hours. The Downtown Action Committee did hear this item on March 12th and recommended approval. Staff also recommends approval as it does meet section 9432A and we have prepared a suggested motion if there are any other questions.
Any questions of staff? Is it for Cleveland Clinic? Is that's what's driving this?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a positive, I think that's a positive selling point myself. So that's why I asked the question because I think there's a lot of excitement about Cleveland Clinic coming to our city.
See, now you're going to have your bicycle accident number again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, all right, any questions of staff?
So this is down in City Place.
You have the new name correct.
We'll be over on Australian, between Tamrin and Australian. It's the Clear Lake District.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Awesome. And you got the name right, City Place now, not Rosemary Square. Good for you. All right, all right. Thank you so much then. No other questions? Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this?
Any patients?
All right, let's bring it back to the board. This is, I think, a very positive thing for our city and I know there's been a lot of excitement about this development. Does anyone have any concerns about it? We already have Good Sam, which is almost downtown, you know, so this is not...
Don't have to sell this.
Okay, all righty, looking for a motion.
Do we do the one on the report or the one here? This is shorter.
We...
See, by the report?
Okay, go ahead.
I move that the planning board recommends approval for code revision case number 25-02 as listed in the staff report dated April 15th, 2025. The motion is based upon a determination that the testimony presented at this hearing, along with the application submitted in staff report constitute a preponderance of competent substantial evidence. Planning Board hereby makes findings of fact that the proposed code amendment satisfy all the criteria and amendment standards found in the City of West Palm Beach Zoning Land Development Regulations, Article 2, Sections 94-32. This approval is made conditional upon restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards listed in the Planning Division's staff report dated April 15th, 2025 that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning code and consistent with the downtown master plan and comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. This motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted, which constitutes competent substantial evidence that the standards of Sections 94-38, D, and 6 have been met.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to our last code revision case, again, from Shetan Bowen. It's their night, 2503.
Did you give a volume discount to the client?
Baca's running.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Joseph First, address 1105 North Dixie Highway. I will also be as brief as possible.
God bless you.
Most of you remember the NORAH sub-district, February of 2022, when we created all of the NORAH master plan components. Happy to report that all of our 160,000 square feet of retail is under construction. We have tenants opening in June, the remainder opening at the end of the year, and our 201 key hotel is also under construction, fully topped off at opening September 26th. So why are we here today? Well, when we were designing the actual code and the scale of the projects, we had a mismatch when we originally did this with our planning work. And so we developed these three different components of scale and height. And so this is to the north of the residential sub-district. We had the NORAH 2 to 8, which was a maximum of 125 feet or eight stories, the NORAH 2 to 15, which was a maximum of 15 stories or 230 feet, and the NORAH 2 to 20, which was a maximum of 20 stories or 305 feet. As we've completed the whole first phase and the hotels under construction, we're already in full design for for-rent and for-sale project in the NORAH 2 to 8 section. And as we got into real design with architects, we realized that we actually had an issue whereby we could not get to our maximum FAR within the allowed amount of stories, but we could within the allowed amount of feet. The reason why that's relevant is that we've had a lot of talk about affordable housing. We are the largest producer of affordable housing through the incentive zoning that we have. So for those that do not remember, the base FAR of all of these sites is 1.0. So when we go to a 3.8 or to a 4.5 or to a 5.5, we are using incentive zoning to do that. As we use incentive zoning, we're required to participate in the affordable housing program with the city where we have to set aside 15% of our gross building area for affordable. So by limiting our height to eight stories, we are not getting to maximize our FAR, we're not getting to maximize our incentive zoning and therefore we're not delivering as much affordable units as we otherwise would have. The chart on the screen just shows our transitional zoning. So for those that recall, the maximum height of our residential area is 40 feet. It then transitions to the 125 feet and then to the 230 and then to the 305 in the northwest corner. The reason for amendment, I already chatted through, but it's really just to ensure that we're getting to our maximum development capacity, which is what we had clearly passed back in February 22, and so we're delivering the most affordable units that we can. The proposed zoning text solely just removes the requirement that says the lesser of eight stories or 125 feet and just allows us to avail ourselves to the 125 feet, the 230, or the 305, as long as 65% of the building is used for residential uses. The reason why staff has included that is because, of course, that affordable requirement is triggered when you're delivering residential uses and not triggered when you're delivering office or other uses. The city also put a nine-foot height requirement per floor just to ensure that we weren't overpacking this envelope with density. We do not have density limitations in our zoning code, just as a reminder, so it's all based on FAR and capacity. The impact of the amendment really is just to keep the exact form that we always had, just to alleviate the eight-story height limit and again, allow us to utilize our maximum FAR. This is the one slide that I think does take a moment to stay on. If we actually designed our buildings within the eight-story limit as opposed to going to the 125 feet, the amount of set aside for the workforce affordable housing would be significantly less. So for our first multifamily project, the workforce housing units that would be required under the eight-story limitation would be 30, whereas the amount of units we're delivering is our 48. So each of those incremental floors that we are allowed to build to 125 feet produce an additional 18 workforce housing units. I'll let the city run through this very quickly. We've met with staff. We started this conversation about a year and a half ago. this conversation about a year and a half ago. There was just some delays in terms of the Ziskovich downtown master plan revisions that are forthcoming. They wanted to ensure that Bernard Ziskovich and his team had an opportunity to look at this code section and approve it, which they have, and as a result, city staff is here in full support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, before you leave, sir, any questions of him?
Yeah, just one clarification.
We're here from the city, Chris.
Again, Chris Kimberly, Senior Urban Designer. Joe went over most of this. I just want to, again, reiterate some of the background context. So when we did the Nora rezoning, one of the things we added, of course, was the intent to the district, and within that, we explicitly call out an increase of residential, commercial densities and intensity through compact, vibrant development. And also note that the Nora development, and as you see in those images there, a lot of the higher concentration, intensity and height was to the peripheries of the district, so closer to Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, along the FEC, and then along the southern end near Quadro. And when we initially had written the regulations, you know, in hindsight, perhaps there was an inflated value to some of the FAR and the heights given, because we always had accounted for office uses. So the larger floor plates and the larger floor-to-ceiling heights, you know, you eat up more of that height within an office development than you would with a multifamily. And again, this is maybe a little bit more particular to that Nora two to eight sub-district. Within the text amendment itself, again, we are limiting it to sixty-five percent of the building area that's reserved to residential, so those types of projects. And as Joe mentioned, it is just eliminating the stories component, so where it says eight stories or a hundred twenty-five feet, it is now just gonna be at the hundred twenty-five feet. We set the minimum ceiling heights at nine feet. Again, this is a comfort level thing, really, we didn't want to compact the buildings too much. And this was brought up in DAC as well, but you know, micro-units are allowed within the downtown, so if you create micro-units and you have a compact ceiling, we wanted to create a little bit of comfort buffer in that end. Items two, three, and four here, these basically address the building requirements tables in the code today. So, for example, in that NOR two to eight, they will say your maximum setbacks from the eighth story, but they don't address what happens if you do a ninth, tenth, and eleventh story. So we're just saying that we will match the height limitations for the setbacks. So if it's at a fifth story, you have a conditional setback, fifth story or fifty feet, we're now saying it's taken from the fifty feet. And the last one there on bullet four, again, with the maximum building footprint, if you're building a ninth, tenth, eleventh story, that didn't exist before, we're just saying it has to match the highest that's in the code currently. Visually, just to kind of show you what this looks like, again, this is not the scale, but what you have currently, again, you'll have a eight-story, a hundred twenty-five-foot building, twenty-foot, or a twenty-foot ground floor with fifteen for each story. What we're doing now is, again, compressing the building a little bit and just adding additional stories. So within that NOR two to eight, that results in a eleven-story building, but it's still within that a hundred twenty-five maximum feet. Staff does support the proposed text amendment. Again, it's narrow in scope, specific to the NOR district, it's specific to residential projects, the height is consistent throughout the district, it's just adding additional density in terms of stories. And in the end, we do net more additional affordable or workforce housing units under that DMP program. Staff does recommend approval as it meets Section ninety-four thirty-two A of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations, and DAC did recommend unanimous approval with a final total of six zero.
Okay, any questions of staff? Because later in the evening, no one's as curious as they used to be.
So the workforce housing units are taking place in the district, like, they're building them?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you so much. Would anyone for the public wish to be heard on this? And if not, we're bringing to the board, if you'll allow me, I've lived in my home for thirty-five years, I'm three blocks from the border of this whole project, I'm so thrilled about what they're doing and can't wait for this project to get done. So I've been watching it very closely.
Your property value is gonna go down now.
You don't know my neighborhood, it's gonna be really helped. Okay, so anyone have any questions on this, or any concerns that are not looking for a motion for approval? Motion, all right, have we a second? Is there a more formal motion we need?
Better read it.
Yeah. I'm sorry. We want to make this where it can do you some good.
I, thank you for the big letters, I appreciate that, that makes my life easier. I move that the planning board recommend approval for code revision case twenty-five dash zero-three, as listed in the staff report dated April ninth, twenty-twenty-five. The motion is based upon a determination that the testimony presented at this hearing, along with the applications submitted, and staff report constitute a preponderance of competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the proposed code amendments satisfy all of the criteria and amendment standards found in the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article Two, Section ninety-four dash thirty-two dash A, thirty-two.
Okay, we have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you so much. That brings us to other business, unfinished business, new business. If not, we stand adjourned, thank you, everyone.
I just wanted to say, I told our security folks up...